Mayor Martini, absent. Councilmember Abbott?
Here.
Lawson? Absent. Smith?
Here.
Bybee?
Here.
Dare?
Here.
City Attorney Adams?
Here.
City Manager Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, opening ceremonies, our invocation speaker today is Bishop Evan Marchant, so if you all please stand. Welcome, thanks for coming down today.
Dear God, our heavenly Father, we are gathered here in this Sparks City Council meeting today, we pray for thy blessings to be here, we thank thee for this beautiful community, for this beautiful summer day, we thank thee for the nation of freedom that we enjoy, we pray for thy blessings to be upon this meeting, we pray for good judgment, we pray for wisdom for those who be making decisions, that they might be for the betterment of our community and for an importance with thy will, we pray for those who serve our community, both those elected as well as those who are employed by the city, that they might be blessed in their efforts to make our city a better place, and we give thee thanks for all that thou hast given us, and offer this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you Bishop. If you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Mr. Driscoll, would you lead us?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna open up the public comment, anybody wishing to speak, please turn in a card. My first speaker is anonymous, come on down, welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, just start where I left off, this is the Department of Public Safety for the state of Nevada publishes a crime report annually, and they do a pretty good job on breaking down domestic violence, this is just one of the pages published in their report, 2011 and 2012 are not credible statistics, but then in 2013, a phenomenon occurs, and there are about half, anywhere from one-third to one-half, EPOs are not issued against TPOs, and remember, this is not all of the domestic violence involving children, these are only temporary protection orders that are granted. Then in 2014, out of an abundance of caution, the judges started issuing about as many EPOs as TPOs. We don't know what the reason is for that, and there are no statistics on it, but we do know that the district court judges in the state of Nevada attended this seminar at their annual conference, it was given in the spring of 2012, and this was their class, the class paperwork that was handed out to the attendees, and what it's about is, in these protection order cases, where the people are represented pro per, that means that when you go to get a TPO, you don't pay filing fees, and you don't have to have an attorney present, and they usually don't, and that's because the state has set up these VAWA centers and courthouses throughout the state, so you have assistance through these VAWA employees, and they are not attorneys. But this memo that was given to the attendees at the district court conference stated that just deny all proper person applications, and the way to do it is to apply case law, and there's a well-known case called Jordan v. State, and your attorney can explain more of that to you. So another reason that we're concerned about what is happening in the courts, why they're issuing only one-third to one-half of EPOs, is this document of 2013, which Rule 2.1A states that the court clerks may not refuse filing any documents, so it stated repeated times, and you've heard testimony, repeated times, that the photographs of the children are not in the court case files. So thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Kathleen Shoup. Come on down Kathleen, welcome.
I'm Kathleen Shoup, and I live very close to Wild Creek Golf Course, in fact, it's my property. I'm really upset about the school, proposed school going in there, when I first moved to Reno area, I lived out at North-South Virginia Street, where Meadowwood Mall now is, and that field would just get covered with geese, there were so many geese that were flying in, I found out that we were part of a real major flyway for the geese, and then, of course, they put Meadowwood Mall, and the geese didn't have a lot of places to go, they've invaded our golf courses, much to the dislike of the golfers, I know that, but you know, geese are very loyal, they mate forever, and I would like to see that kind of loyalty from all of you, I would like to see you care more about our environment, about our community, and to try to stop this devastation of Wild Creek. Thank you.
Mike Brearley. How you doing Mike, come on down, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. I used to work here, in fact, I worked for the city while this city hall was being built, and council chambers still look pretty much the same, actually very friendly location. I would like to appeal to you to try to keep Wild Creek, you know, and when I was here for the city, we wanted Wild Creek to belong to the city, but our finance people came out and said that we just couldn't swing it, so Mayor Lillard actually got the convention authority to take on the project. The city did still have other involvement, the city gave a lot of water rights for the project, and what they did is transfer water rights off our streets to Wild Creek, and gave it to the county. City late after I left, piped the fluent water to the golf course, so the city's been involved with this project from the beginning, in fact, I even negotiated with Conforti in the early stages to nail him down on a price. This is an asset, Wild Creek is an asset to our community, and I would hate to see it go away, you know, we've had several golf courses go away in the recent past, and I hope the city sees some wisdom in keeping Wild Creek. I'm not sure that you're the body that would stop having a high school built there, but public sentiment could, and the city council somehow endorse keeping Wild Creek, that would be beneficial. Salvation I see in keeping Wild Creek is, the convention authority needs to lease or somehow have private enterprise take this over, and there's been a couple situations here in our valley that that has been a success, and I know the convention authority wants to get out of the golf business, but that might be a way to keep it going. Thank you very much.
Wes Griffin, come on down Wes, welcome.
Hello, I'm Wes Griffin, I'm here to encourage you to save Wild Creek. I don't know, do you have a favorite oxymoron, maybe something like military intelligence, or maybe jumbo shrimp, or maybe acting naturally? I think maybe today many people would think that the term ancient wisdom is an oxymoron, you know, we know so much today, we know so much more than the people that came before us, our forefathers, a lot of people especially believe that today, because of all the information it's about. Interestingly enough, though, I think that there is plenty of ancient wisdom that we need to pay attention to, and one of those bits of ancient wisdom is an idiom called "an albatross around my neck," or "an albatross around your neck," and that came from a poem two or three hundred years ago, called "The Rhyme of the Ancient Mariner," and the essence of the poem is that some mariners were caught down in the Antarctic and were about to perish, and an albatross come along and led them to safety, and then they soon forgot about that, and the captain killed that albatross, and as a result of that, he ended up wearing that albatross around his neck for the rest of his life. Now, Wild Creek is not an albatross, but it's been with us now on forty years, and it served our community very well, there's been three LPGA golf tournaments there, many people play golf today there that would not otherwise be able to play golf, we've got two high school golf teams, we've got First Tee, we've got the Special Olympics. Now, these people may be able to go someplace else, but definitely when you remove twenty-seven holes of golf from our community, it's gonna be hard for them to go places, other places, and there's gonna be many people that are not gonna be able to play golf, because this is a public golf course, it's reasonably priced, and we need it, it's an asset to our community. I just can't imagine why, when we have this kind of facility, and it'll be paid off at roughly a million-two, worth to replace it, probably could not be replaced, at least thirty million dollars, why would we let something like this go for a million-two? After that is paid off, this is gonna be a profitable golf course, there's two other golf courses here, Washoe and Sierra Sage, where they've been turned over to private management, and they're now profitable. Our community is growing, some people would have us to believe that golf is becoming less popular, it's been around four or five hundred years, I don't think it's gone away, so help us save Wild Creek, thank you.
Anybody else in the audience wish to speak at this time? Okay, CNN, we'll bring it back to the council. Approve the agenda, anybody wanna pull anything, or otherwise looking for a motion? Mr. Dare?
I move to approve the consent items as they are.
Where, this is the agenda?
Right, the agenda as it is.
Abbott?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. I'm trying. Passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, number six, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting of July 24, 2017, anybody wanna pull anything, additions, subtractions? Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the minutes from the council meeting of July 24, 2017, as presented.
Okay, we have a motion, and Mr. Abbott?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, we do not have any announcements or presentations today, so we'll move on to consent items, anybody wanna pull a consent item? Mr. Dare?
I don't wanna pull anyone, but now I will move to approve the consent items as they are.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second? Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thank you. We'll move on to general business now, nine point one, consideration discussion of possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of an appointment to the Sierra Arts Foundation Board of Trustees. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, this is a new appointment for the city, it was recognized that Sierra Arts Foundation's board had a position available, and Sparks was a worthy candidate from that standpoint, and Ms. Francine Burge, who's on our staff, has been working with Sierra Arts for quite a while, so the mayor thought that it would be good to have her with his initial appointment, be the one, since she has transitional knowledge, and so we're just looking for the council to confirm that appointment at this time.
Comments? Seeing none, looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott?
I'm gonna confirm the mayor's appointment for, you probably want her name, totally just drew a blank, Francine, yeah Francine Burge, to the Sierra Arts Foundation Board of Trustees.
Okay, we have a motion, Ms. Bybee?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. That passes unanimously, thanks Steve. Nine point two, consideration of possible approval of impact fee credit agreement number twenty-three between the City of Sparks and Pioneer Meadows Development. Mr. Martini?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, John Martini, your Community Services Director, before you today, on an item that would normally fall under your consent agenda item, but it does, it is part of our impact fee service area number one program, and since last year, we updated the entire fee structure for impact fee service area number one, and then last month, I brought forward an impact fee agreement from Pioneer Meadows Development LLC, which allows them to be an active member, to hold trust account with the city, this is the last piece, so I wanted to have it in front of the council as an example of all the steps that go into our impact fee service area. Pioneer Meadows Development LLC has constructed a portion of the Spanish Springs Regional Trail within the Pioneer Meadows Development, there is a picture in your staff report, Rich, could you bring it up for me at this point? Thank you. It's the overall aerial photo, should be the second one, Mr. Brown, thank you, ah, perfect. The council can see it's adjacent to the Pioneer Meadows Pond that was constructed as the fill source for the development, as well as it goes across Unit Seven, as well as one of the older parts, right next to the park we just finished last year, this completes a portion of the Pioneer Meadows Development. Staff has reviewed the costs, and the final award of credits, and they will be in final form since it is complete, is a hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and seventy-one cents. To remind the council, if you do decide to approve this agreement today, credits will be issued to Pioneer Meadows Development LLC, and they will be parks credits, different than our residential construction tax credits, these are our regional trail credits, they will then be able to use them against future building permit cost, to pay the impact fee that we set in 2016. As another reminder, they can be used anywhere within impact fee service area one, if you remember the big border around northeast Sparks, and that is in a nutshell the whole program, so I'm available for questions, if you have any?
Questions or comments, Mr. Dare?
They've done a good job down there, and it's a beautiful place, if you're ever looking for a place to go out and go on trails and all that stuff, but I do move to approve the impact fee credit agreement number twenty-three between the City of Sparks and Pioneer Meadows Development LLC, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Abbott?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? I have a question. The trail, is it on the lakeside, so I mean, they have access to the lake there, or is it on the other side of the fence?
It is adjacent to the Pioneer Meadows Pond that is part of the HOA, there's no true access to the pond, if you will, but it is adjacent to it.
We'll run that trail together.
I did that this morning, thank you. Any other comments or questions, seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thanks John. Okay. Okay, nine point three, consideration and possible approval of change order number one, it just changed, hang on a second here. Switched on me.
Yep.
Probably did something. Okay, considering possible approval of change order number one to the existing contract with Q and D Construction to replenish the force account, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Smith, members of council, for the record, Andy Hummel, Utility Manager for the City of Sparks. So, with this item, we were asking for a change order to increase our force account on the North Truckee Drain Phase Three by three hundred thousand dollars. Our reason for this, in late April of this year, our contractor on this project, Q and D Construction, encountered bedrock on this project, it was something completely unanticipated, every other area that we dug on this project, the entire first phase, all of our test pits, was all nice sandy material, basically deposited over millennia at this end of the valley, however, we found the one rock in the area. So, initial efforts to take care of this, we brought in some special rock breaking equipment on the end of the excavators, things like that, it was a really hard rock formation, so nothing was, wasn't hardly even scraping it, so Q and D made some phone calls, they found a blasting company that was finishing up down in the canyon at the Tri-Center Development on the roadway being built there, so they were able to get them at the tail end of their work, get in there quickly, drill it and blast it, and get that rock out of there, took, we lost about three weeks of time during this effort, we used force account during that time for losses incurred by Q and D, the trench plate rentals, things like that, a lot of really expensive equipment that wasn't able to work, and then all the drilling and blasting costs and such, so during that time, we also did some seismic surveys, some specialized surveys we would normally do, to see if there was any other hints of any more bedrock, as long as they were there, we should take care of, but nothing else was found. So, all told, we spent about two-hundred ninety-eight thousand in force account with the original contract, we had about five-hundred thousand, less than five percent of the total contract price, but with that, two-hundred ninety-eight thousand being incurred, our remaining work, we still have a railroad crossing to do, as well as a couple of connections to Endot Rightaway and pipes that are there, and in those situations as well, we'll need to, if we need to make a quick decision on an unforeseen impact in that area, we're asking for this change order to reload the force account by three hundred thousand.
Kind of surprises me, because there's no rocks in Nevada.
Yeah, exactly. What we think it may be is, with the flood project in the nineteen-sixties, the Army Corps of Engineers blasted a formation that they call the Vista Reef in the Truckee River, we think this may be that same rock formation, I mean, it was, went from, we're digging twenty foot deep, nothing in our way, to within about fifty feet, it was within five feet of the surface, just a nice sloped formation.
I thought you were saying Garth brought that over.
Yeah, I'd like to blame it on him and ask him for some money back, but that probably won't help.
Okay, Mr. Dare?
Question, so you did, we did find out there's no other large rocks like that in that particular area, I mean, obviously, it's for unforeseen things, but there's anything that you'd say we're probably gonna spend this three hundred thousand on, or do you think we probably spent the unforeseen already, or is there quite a few areas that we really truly might spend this?
Yeah, with the force account, it's really for something unforeseen. We need to keep the project moving forward. In this situation, like the rental on the shoring system that they're using, for example, is $120,000 a month, and it's not something they can just send back and not use for a month. So if we went through, say, the normal change order process on something like this and added about six weeks, that would greatly increase the cost, for example.
Now, this, since those are kind of done, the next area that you see going under the railroad, we were just talking about that. I know what you're talking about. So those are the areas now, we'd hope that we don't hit anything crazy.
Exactly. Hope that there's nothing in the way, but if there is, this gives us a mechanism to deal with it.
Ms. Bybee.
Andy, I'm looking at this and at the numbers and everything, and there was $500,000 originally for exactly this type of thing, for unforeseen. Is it normal in the past that we've had to replenish a force account? Is it more because this was such a huge expenditure that normally the force account covers smaller variations in your cost of doing, you know, doing the job, where this took 300,000 out of the 481,000 you spent? Is that kind of more the unique situation of how much this increased it, that we need to replenish that money?
Yeah, it's kind of a unique situation. I went back and looked in the 13 years I've been here. This is the second time that I've had to bring one before you. The first one was the Spanish Springs Interceptor Project. We elected to do a bore and jack under an intersection, and that additional cost is what we brought back for timing and with Reed High School.
So what we're hoping, this will replenish the account, so the money's there, and hopefully, if things all go really well, we might not necessarily spend that full 500, or the additional 300,000 in addition to your, some of it could be spent, but it gives you that assurance that if the, you don't have to come back to us again if something else does come about. It stays in that account then.
Yeah, exactly. It's, the goal is to not spend it, but if it's, if it's there and that quick decision needs to be made, it's available.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Looking for a motion. Ms. Bybee.
I move to approve change order number one to the existing contract with Q and D Construction in the amount of $300,000.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Dare.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Andy. Now, you the next one, too. Number four, item 9.4, consideration of possible approval of a claim for reimbursement of moving expenses related to the construction of North Truckee Drain. Andy.
Yes, again, members of council, for the record, Andy Hummel, Utility Manager for the City of Sparks. This item before you is consideration of a claim for reimbursement for moving and relocation expenses incurred by Soil Tech on the North Truckee Drain Phase 3 project area. Soil Tech is a tenant at 2090 Kleppy Lane. Part of their use of that property is a nursery area in the rear lot of that parcel. That area is within our temporary construction area for the project, and since we've got it fenced off and a big hole in the ground, they really can't maintain that use, as they had to essentially move off-site with that nursery and reestablish it elsewhere. This, as allowed under the Uniform Relocation Act, Soil Tech is eligible for a claim for those moving and relocation expenses. And with the nursery, that's quite a bit of work to reestablish something like that with temporary water service and things like that, and moving all the plants and stuff. So they did submit all the proper claim forms. Staff reviewed it, reviewed it with them, reviewed it with our real property consultant to make sure everything was legitimate, everything was found to be correct, and we're presenting that for your consideration. We do recommend approval.
Andy, this pretty much goes with the relocation act.
Yeah, yep, yeah, protects those tenants.
Questions or comments?
So Andy, when, when, when we had companies or businesses that we were impacting in the initial, as we were negotiating, to bear agreement with Soil Tech of what the costs would be, or what we would reimburse them for the, for the cost to, to access their property, was this something extra?
Yeah, this is above that. Those initial, the easement costs were for the property owner themselves, and then the tenants, whether we were going to impact them or not, could be eligible if they needed to move off-site, find other parking, things like that.
So we did offer easement to the property owner?
Yes, yep.
But nothing to the tenant? Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Mr. Dare.
I move to approve the claim for reimbursement of moving expenses by Soil Tech in the amount of $62,631.61.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Abbott. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Andy. Okay, 9.5, Amber. Consideration and possible approval of an interlocal cooperative agreement with Washoe County, City of Reno, City of Sparks, and the RTC of Washoe County. Are you going to ask them to come down, or?
Only if you guys have questions that I can answer. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, I'm Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. I'm here before you for your consideration and possible approval of an interlocal cooperative agreement with Washoe County, City of Reno, City of Sparks, and the Regional Transportation Commission, the RTC, for projects that are included in the RTC's FY 2018 Program of Projects, and it's estimated at just under $311 million. The City of Sparks' pavement quality team and the utility division work very closely with the RTC to prioritize and identify road projects within our region that were within the City of Sparks. Some of the ones that are included in this program of projects include the continued construction of the Fourth Empreater Bus Rapid Transit Program, or Project, the start of the Clean Water Way Project, which will be the road rehabilitation from McCarran to the treatment plant. Also includes finishing the Pyramid-McCarren intersection and numerous other design and construction projects. So I'm here today asking for your approval.
Questions or comments? Pyramid-McCarren around October? Yeah? Okay, good stuff. It looks great. I mean, it really does look good. It's good, good, good job.
Have it open. I do.
Questions or comments? And we're looking at Southeast Connector, Garth, March? Yeah, come on down. Give them an update. Southeast Connector was approved. Is it on and recorded or not? Approved in 1964, so government does not work fast.
For the record, Garth Tholks, Line Drain Manager for the Regional Transportation Commission, the Southeast Connector is going to open up when Mother Nature allows us to open it up next spring. The last few items of work, namely paving of the asphalt, putting down the pavement markings, require temperatures warm enough for us to properly construct all of that. So it's...
They're saying it hasn't been warm enough yet.
Well, come next spring, it has not yet, yeah. So right, you know, May, June, if we get a warm early spring, obviously, as soon as we can get out there, we want to get the thing buttoned up and opened up to the public, but it's going to be dependent on the temperatures that we have. You're welcome. Sorry, what's that? I've had enough experience working in front of elected officials that I've picked up some of their mannerisms.
You can go now. Okay. Mr. Dare.
I just want to say it's been, it's great work with RTC. They give us good information. It's good work with Garth and all the stuff out there, and I just don't know why it takes you so long, but I think it's great. It's awesome. No, actually, it's fantastic. I do know that many of our people call us and passionately would like you to finish, so please continue to do what you do, and it's awesome. I look forward to our pyramid area being done for our businesses and all that stuff. I know we're down to the end of that, so wonderful. Good job.
Ms. Bybee.
I just had a question. I don't know if this is for Garth. On the Pyramid Freeway, US 395 link, is there a, to be determined? Are we looking at, what kind of timeline are we looking at? If one of you could give us an update on that, that'd be great.
Identify yourself.
Good afternoon, Brian Stewart, Director of Engineering of RTC. Good afternoon, council members. Yeah, the update on the Pyramid, Pyramid, wrong project, sorry, the Pyramid 395 Connector is, right now, it's being reviewed in the NEPA process with the federal government and NDOT. And as far as we're moving that through the comment periods, and it will go to the public, and the NEPA document wouldn't be approved until sometime next year, in 2018. And then after that, it's really a funding type of thing to see what's going on and working with our partner in NDOT and seeing who's going to take the lead on that.
Is there a goal of kind of, are we looking at three years, five years, 20 years?
Well, it definitely be a phase project for the RTC. It is out into the further years, so up into the 2035, 2040 range, as far as the full build-out. But there is phases there in the, in the five, or in the tenure for the Clean Way up into the Sparks area there, to widen that out to six lanes. Yes, it, it, it's a very, very expensive project, and with all the other projects going on, particularly with NDOT and the spaghetti bowl, it's definitely one that's not as high on the list anymore.
I've asked them to look at a connector from AD into Spanish Springs as well, so we can get those people out of there. Matter of fact, that would be my priority, as opposed to the 395 Connector. So, just saying.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Looking for a motion. Ms. Bybee.
I move to approve the interlocal cooperative agreement with Washoe County, City of Reno, City of Sparks, and the Regional Transportation Commission of Washoe County for the fiscal year 2018 Program of Projects.
We have a motion, looking for a second, Mr. Abbott. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Amber. Thanks, Brian. Thanks, Garth. Okay, 9.6, consideration and possible adoption of resolution number 3316 authorizing the transfer of the city's 2017 private activity bond capacity of $4,947,047,997.41. Welcome, George.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members, George Graham, Housing Specialist, City of Sparks. Today, I'd like to present for your consideration and approval Sparks 2017 Private Activity Bond Cap Transfer. Under the Federal Tax Reform Act enacted in 1986, the state of Nevada receives an annual allocation of private activity bond cap, and the private activity bond cap can be used for private infrastructure, utility projects, affordable housing projects or programs. Staff received an abundant amount of request and interest in our private activity bond cap for 2017, and subsequently, we requested that applicants submit a comprehensive account of what their particular project or program consisted of. By July 7, we had requested that. Consequently, one particular developer had requested to be withdrawn from consideration because they were not selected as the choice for their particular project. So it came down to two applicants, Nevada Housing Division and Nevada Rural Housing Authority. We, staff met separately, met both agencies separately, and they presented what their particular project entailed, and after thorough review and evaluation, staff considered also that the previous year, prior year, the Nevada Rural Housing Authority received the full allocation of 2016, which was 4.8 million in bond cap. So staff, recommendation is to, per the breakout of 75% towards Nevada Housing Division and 25% of this year's allocation to Nevada Rural Housing Authority. Both agencies have performed admirably in our community, and we felt that that was a fair assessment for this year's application. So in closing, I recommend city council's approval of the transfer, again, broken out 75% to Nevada Housing Division and 25% to the Nevada Rural Housing Authority. So at this time, I'm prepared to address any questions that may have.
Comments? Mr. Dare.
I've heard that we get to do this each year, that this comes, we typically get about that amount, or is that determined upon some ratio that the state does per everybody or per county?
It, it varies, but approximate that amount. The prior year was 4.8, this year is 4.9 plus, so it varies, but it's pretty close.
Different people, three different people came in, one backed out. So is it typically quite a few people who are interested in trying to get this, or is it a?
Well, prior to even considering the applications, I first conferred with Jeff Kronk to see if there's a utility project or another project, and once I have clearance as far as that, we usually receive two to three requests. And again, the industry and everything, what's going on dictates how, the value of the bond cap.
I think it's good. I just, I've never, I've not had the opportunity to be a part of this yet, so it's just kind of interesting.
No, thanks. Thank you.
George, I see in the one letter that you have from the Nevada Rural Housing Authority states that it, that Sparks may have an eligible project this year. Do we have something on the books for, the biggest need in this community, in this, in this region, is affordable housing, workforce housing and affordable housing right now. So is there a project that some of these funds will be used for, or something that is coming on the books for us in Sparks to share on affordable housing?
Well, early in the solicitation, we did have a project, and the Reliant Group, Reliant Management Group out of San Francisco, had a proposed project for the Boulder Creek Apartments. Subsequently, they were not selected at that time to go further, and it came down to the two applicants. But they were in consideration, and that's why I advised all the, and the prior year in 2016, Reliant Group, again, for the Boulder Creek Apartments, were in consideration, but they could not gain site control, and the project ended up falling, falling through.
So these funds, these funds that, that will be used are primarily for assistance for first-time home buyers, for, not within, within the money, the 4.9 million is not for any specific housing units or projects that will be built with us?
Programs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
I move to adopt resolution number 3316 authorizing the transfer of the city's 2017 tax-exempt bond volume capacity to be divided as follows: 75% to the Nevada Housing Division and 25% to the Nevada Rural Housing Authority to support their respective homeownership and single-family housing programs.
Second. Mr. Abbott, you second it? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, George.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
9.7 is the first reading. Donna.
Coordinates amending Chapter 12.48 of the Sparks Municipal Code Electrical Systems Franchise Agreement to allow the city council to distribute a portion of the electrical system franchise fees between a fund for street maintenance and a fund for park maintenance in such proportions as the city council directs from time to time, and providing other matters properly related thereto.
Okay, this is the first reading for bill number 2721. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, August 28, 2017. Did you want to add something?
No, I just, in case you guys have any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Agenda number 9.8 is the first reading. Donna?
Bill number 2722, an ordinance amending Chapter 12.46 of the Sparks Municipal Code, Natural Gas Franchise Agreement, to allow for the city council to distribute a portion of the natural gas franchise fees between a fund for street maintenance and a fund for park maintenance in such proportions as the city council directs from time to time, and other matters properly related thereto.
First reading for bill number 2722. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, August 28, 2017. Thank you. We'll move on. We don't have any public hearing items, planning zoning items, none. Comments? I'll open the public comment period now, and I have one card. William, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't read your last name. I know you've been here before, but come on down. Yeah, you. Is it, William, what is your last name?
Wagner.
Wagner? Okay.
Wagner.
That's right, William, you have three minutes. Welcome. Two minutes?
Three.
Three. Good.
My name is Bill Wagner, and I reside at 165, 2165 Canyon Point Court in the Vistas. And first, I would like to thank Don Abbott, Ron Smith, and Christopher Dar for responding to my email. I really do appreciate what you fellows did. I'm here to talk about, and I'm just going to read the net letters, PNC 170032, Lot 2255S, Los Altos Parkway. They didn't want to build a 64-unit apartment on 7.78. It doesn't make sense to me, but it really makes sense to you. I'm asking you to please respect the planning commission decision not to rezone for multifamily too. Thank you very much for hearing me, and as the Terminator would say, "I'll be back."
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the audience wish to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for comments. Any comments from the city council? City manager? I have a couple, Mr. City Manager. I would like you to look into changing the ordinance on operating hours for the recreational marijuana dispensaries that we have in town. Now, everybody else is, seems to be open a little bit longer than we allow ours, so if you just take a look at that and bring it back to us. And then one other item is, I believe the hearing for the rezoning, the bill was concerned about, is on September 25, and maybe we should move that item only, the rezone of the Vistas, to later on the day, like a 6 o'clock start. So if we finish early, we can take a recess, come back at 6 o'clock, just to hear that item.
So two things on that. It is the 25th is staff's intention, and so with that, I will review your rules and discuss those with the city attorney's office and determine what options, and most likely we'll be able to do that.
Okay. First reading.
The second reading would be on September 25 is current staff calendar plan.
That way, if we have a lot of people here, it'd just be dedicated to that item. Okay. Any other comments from the council? City manager? Okay, no other comments? Without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.